Can everybody hear?
All right, excellent.
Well, it's about that time, and we do have quite a few items on the agenda tonight.
You need a clerk first.
What's that?
You need a clerk first.
We do need a clerk. That would be wise. It's a place to be tonight.
Wow. Did you see your gift from?
Yeah.
Give me some reading material.
Yeah.
She's a good one.
Make a motion.
Well, I think that would be.
He's good.
Yeah.
He's good. He's on his own.
He's a good kid.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, sir. You're fine. You're fine. You're fine. You were busy. Wow, look at this.
If everybody would like to go ahead and silence their cell phones.
I can't get out.
Got it. Right, yeah. All right. Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, excellent. I apologize, I'm really far away from the mic. Excellent, thank you fully. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the council, regular scheduled Monday, March 1st council meeting. It's nice to see a big crowd. This is obviously the place to be tonight, but so thanks, thanks everybody for coming out. Note, there will be an opportunity during the meeting for citizens to address the town council. When I declare the public comments open, I request that anybody addressing the council who has signed up, approached the podium when called, state your first and last name, and provide your complete mailing address, and you will get your three minutes of fame. And again, thanks for coming out tonight, it's nice to see a lot of smiling faces behind masks, but still good to see everybody. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Pillion.
Present.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
And Mayor Whit.
Here. We'll now do the pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to ask Mr. Anderson if you'll lead us.
I pray for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And that brings us to the approval of the agenda. I understand, I think we have one change that needs to be made, so I would entertain a motion to make that change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to introduce a proclamation to item G, recognizing March 2021 as multiple sclerosis education and awareness month.
Right, so I have a motion by Mr. Owens to add a proclamation for multiple sclerosis education month. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whit.
Aye. So, moving right along, that brings us to public comments, and we do have some individuals signed up for public comments, so first on the list is Mr. Emmett Yerri.
Well, thank you very much, ordinarily I would have had these comments when you discussed a certain item, which I understand may be coming up on executive session.
Mr. Yerri, can I interrupt you just one second? I think we have some other amendments to the agenda that aren't on there. Aren't we going to add some closed sessions to the agenda?
We are, but do we need to have that amended as well? Yes, if we're going to amend the agenda. Oh, I apologize, hang on just one second, that was my mistake. We are, I think, going to have a closed session, so if Mr. Owens would like to amend his amended motion for the agenda and add that closed session?
I'd like to amend my motion to add another amendment to the agenda of having a closed session.
Is that sufficient, Kim, or do we need to state the whole thing over?
I think it's just a new motion to amend the agenda to include the previous amendment, and then to add a closed session to discuss lease, and a closed session to discuss.
Disposition of property?
Disposition of property.
And appointment to boards and commissions.
Exactly what Kim said.
Okay, so I understand we have a new motion to add a closed session to discuss lease, discuss disposition of property, as well as discuss an appointments to boards and commissions, is that what I heard?
Well, the appointment of boards and commissions already on the agenda.
Okay, all right, excellent, so just the first two then. Are you okay with that, Mr. Owens?
Yes, sir.
That was his motion.
That was his motion, right. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion, any discussion? Should I add something before, apparently? Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whit.
Aye. I apologize, Emmett, that was my bad, but we are now to the public comments portion, and it is your time to shine.
Well, it's my understanding, without trying to violate state secrets, that what you might be going into executive session about disposition, possible disposition of property would be the Hasenger House, and if that should be the case, which I understand probably will be the case, then I would address my comments with that assumption, if I may. As you probably all know, it's almost eighteen years ago that the thirteen acres adjacent to the Hasenger House property was dedicated as a veterans memorial park, and later the Veterans Memorial Park Foundation was began, and it was given the oversight of the development and oversight of the park by this town council some years ago. Since that time, since the beginning of that, of the town allowing this park to be used as a veterans memorial park over eighteen years ago, there've been a number of things, great things have happened there. We first had a yellow ribbon monument to honor all those who are away serving our country, reminding them that this yellow ribbon is always there for them, they will always be remembered until they come home. We have a liberty peace tree monument, also to honor and commemorate liberty and peace. I think you cannot have one really without the other. We have a World War II monument, a Korean monument, all these are granite, five picnic pavilions, one for each military service, we now may need to add a sixth with the Space Force that's coming into play. We have a ceremonial ground, as you know, a gazebo in pergola, beautiful missing man chair, chair, and flagpoles on both the north and south ends of the park, and there've been more than forty-five memorial trees that have been planted in honoring our veterans. We also have a walking path that probably has, if you walk all around the park, probably close to a mile, that's used on a regular basis. And contributing in great part to our success in preserving and establishing the liberty in this country has been our natural resources. And freedom would be much less sweet and meaningful if it were not able to be enjoyed in such a beautiful place as America. By the same token, a land without freedom is a land without beauty. But it must always be remembered, both freedom and our environment are very fragile, and like our precious children, must be constantly guarded. It's only fitting and proper that we have set aside a special place that will give recognition and honor to those that have served our country, and at the same time honor our environment, and be a place of education and inspiration for our children. Now, we have five picnic pavilions presently at the park, one for each military services before the Space Force. We have some parking at the south end of the park. Over the years, we have been using a parking lot adjacent to the Hasenger House. It's my understanding that because of the economic conditions that has befallen this town and the country, that changes may have to be made, one might be to sell the Hasenger House. It was brought to my attention about a week ago that the initial plan was to, in the Hasenger House, was to maybe maximize the land that went with the Hasenger House property and redrawing the lines. But when I learned that, and I was appreciate the town calling that to my attention, something I thought might have been perhaps an oversight was what this might do if we brought that line back basically all the way to the south. We extended the original boundary of the Hasenger House property, it would extend into what, into the parking area that had been used for the park. And we have people using the picnic shelters all the time, and more and more will come on as when we get the restroom facility open, which hopefully will be soon, especially with, once the COVID situation is corrected, and I'm confident that will be soon, sooner than later. But if we don't have parking, we, not only we have destroyed part of the use and the beauty of that park, and so I'm asking, when you all go into executive session or open session or whatever, that you consider making sure that we preserve adequate parking so we can maximize the use of that park on both ends? And three of those shelters of the five are on the north end, or the north side where the Hasenger House is. Now, it might have been suggested, well, we could go maybe into the park for more parking, but when you do that, you've destroyed a green space. You've also destroyed the aesthetics that has been developed over the years at the park. And so I would ask you not do that, but to give us some additional parking, and when I say us, it's the people's park, it's the town's park, so it's not, and so don't take away from one to add to another, don't destroy one to hopefully add to another, so it makes no sense. And so, you know, I would ask that you not fall prey to what I would call self-cannibalizing economics or philosophies. And I think that's what it would be, basically self-cannibalizing. Take this away to think that you're going to add more value here, but you'll take away the value on the other hand that you cannot replace in money, once that's gone. So I would ask that you consider that, when you go back in the executive session. First of all, I want to thank you, I think I've spoken to most of the town council members individually, either in personal phone, the town manager was kind enough to go, also go with me to visit the site. And so I think there's been a tentative line drawn that would help us some. I'd like to even have more parking, but we have to be realistic as well. But the more we can maximize the parking on the north end, the better and more valuable, and the more use we can get out of that park for future generations, so, thank you.
Number two on the list, we've got Mr. John Bradley.
This is, I'd like to say this is Colonel Bradley, honored to have him, he's a distinguished graduate of the Elton Virginia Military Institute, served his country for over twenty years, in Vietnam and any other places, and he's a member of our board, and I'm proud of him.
Thank you for your attention and allowing me to speak. I'd like to echo Emmett's comments. When I first heard that the property lines had been redrawn and reemphasized, I was concerned about just how we would, thank you, how we would cope with that property line as it exists on the drawing. And there's a couple of workarounds we could do. Obviously, is to build in the right way next to the property and regrade the area for a new parking lot. Very expensive, very time consuming, and as Emmett pointed out, it would be robbing Peter to pay Paul. Also, it takes away from the green space that we have there, and I think it would look really negatively on the park if it appeared in print that we were tearing up the park to replace it sections with a parking lot. I mean, that sounds almost like a song from the near past. So, the second option would be to use the parking lot on the south end of the park, which is utilized pretty heavily now. The problem with that is many of our functions that we have for the public include handicapped and the more mature denizens of the area. And it would be very difficult, I believe, for them to traverse the area from the southern end of the park to the northern end to enjoy the pavilions and the amenities we have at the north end of the park. So, I see it as key to be able to offer adjacent parking to the north end of the park so that it becomes more usable, friendly to the veterans and their families and the public for which the park is built, and I ask you to consider that in your deliberations. Thank you again for letting me speak. Thank you.
And that brings up Mr. R.L. Saunders.
My name is Lee Saunders, I've been involved with the planning of the parks since about 2004, and I'll keep my comments very brief, I'm in complete accordance with what has been said by Mr. Emmett Yerri and by Colonel John Bradley. I do believe that we need to give some additional consideration to the parking situation here, and again, I hope we're able to redraw these lines, thank you.
Thank you.
If I just might, Mr. Mayor, like, he's also a retired Marine major, so we don't want to leave out the Marines.
Thank you again, gentlemen. All right, so moving right along, we've got the approval of amendments, council. If there are no changes on the February 1st or 16th meeting minutes, we can do those together in one swift, if that's something you guys want to do. I would entertain a motion to approve those. I would entertain a motion to approve those then?
I'm going to make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Anderson to approve both the February first and February sixteenth, 2021 meetings, minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Owens. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. We do have a proclamation that was one of the bizarre amendments that we made. So, Mr. Owens, if you would like to read that for us, I would be grateful.
Yes, I'd like to read the proclamation for March 2021, Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a chronic, often disabling disease of the central nervous system that damages the myelin sheath that surrounds the protective nerve cells, and whereas the damage slows down or blocks messages between the brain and body, leading to symptoms of MS, including visual disturbances, muscle weakness, trouble with coordination and balance, and thinking and memory problems, and sensations such as numbness, prickling, and pins and needles. And whereas experts estimate that there are currently four hundred thousand people in the United States diagnosed with MS, and twice as many women than men are affected by MS. And whereas MS can be mild and can cause individuals to lose their ability to write, speak, or walk. And whereas most individuals experience their first symptoms of MS between the ages of twenty and forty, and whereas the exact cause of MS is unknown, there is no cure, but there are treatments for initial attacks, medications, therapies to improve symptoms, and recently developed drugs to slow the worsening of the disease. And whereas the MS Alliance of Virginia provides programs and services for anyone in Virginia whose life has been affected by MS. And whereas through education assistance to support groups, special programs and events, and dissemination of information, the MSAV provides a better-informed general population and means to improve the quality of life for those in Virginia with MS. And whereas the MSAV is a hundred percent volunteer organization formed to fill needs of support groups and provide educational programs, activities, and events, and help others start up deep programs in their communities. And whereas raised public awareness of MS will lead to increased support and services of families in the Commonwealth of Virginia that are impacted by this disease. And at this point, I'll turn this over to our mayor, so he can hereby recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Owens. So now, therefore, I, Derek Webb, do hereby recognize March 2021 as Multiple Sclerosis Education and Awareness Month in the town of Abingdon, and I call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to formally adopt that proclamation?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Motion by Mr. Owens. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, who got to it first?
It doesn't matter.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch. Any discussion, council? While hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. That brings us to petitions and public hearings. We do have a public hearing, an application for a special use permit pursuant to Section fifteen-nine utilization of the flood hazard district of the town of Abingdon zoning ordinance. Proposed construction in the flood hazard district currently zoned R1 residential district located at 285 Bogie Drive, tax map number 1058-7-67. Mr. Boswell.
Thank you, Mayor Webb. Getting a Monday on here. Thank you, Mayor Webb and honorable counsel. This is a public hearing concerning a special use permit submitted by Mr. Kai Tang, whose property is located at 285 Bogie Drive. Mr. Tang is proposing to construct an open concept carport on the northern portion of his property, which also lies within a floodway fringe district. Article fifteen, Section fifteen-nine of the flood hazard district ordinance requires all uses, activities, and development within any flood hazard district shall be undertaken only upon the issuance of a special use permit. Bundy Architecture and Engineering performed a hydrologic analysis of the impact of the addition to the one percent chance flood elevation, and determined that since the calculated flood elevation is below the base flood elevation, the carport has no impact based on the analysis. During the January twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting, commission members voted six to one to approve the special use permit with the contingency that the proposed development be in compliance with the established private restrictive covenants. Staff at that time made the commission aware that the town does not have legal purview of a private restrictive covenants, and thus has no enforcement authority.
So, council, what questions do we have for Mr. Boswell tonight? When I peruse through all the literature, it appears as though it's very unlikely to flood.
That's correct, yes. It seemed that the carport was going to be constructed at least four foot above the base flood elevation.
Okay.
So it'll have no impact, according to the analysis.
Okay. And Cam, does this have to move through two separate public hearings or just the one?
We have this separate public hearing, so you need to open the public hearing.
Sure. All right. So at this time, I will open, unless you guys have questions for Mr. Boswell, I will just open this for a public hearing, if anybody would like to speak. Anybody want to speak in favor of or against? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and ensue with council discussion. Anything, anything else we have for Mr. Boswell, question-wise? Mr. Anderson, you look like you have a question.
He shouldn't, he was there.
I've seen this several times.
Gotcha. So, we're tearing on...
We dealt with it before.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It seems to pass all the stats, you know?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's good. Pretty simple, open concept, some slight bracing on the front side.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So the question would be whether there's a motion for a special use permit for that property?
Okay. So, you know, if there's no questions, then I would entertain a motion for a special use permit for that purpose.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to grant the special use permit for Mr. Tang. Do I have a second? Ms. Pillion, I apologize. Second by Mr. Anderson. Any discussion, council, at all? We're a quiet crowd tonight. All right. Hearing no discussion. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Appreciate it. That was easy enough, right? That was. All right. So moving to resolutions, we do have two resolutions tonight. The first one is a resolution accepting certain Hasenger right-of-way. Mr. Do.
Good evening, Mayor Webb, members of council. Following up on his excellent work when we were dealing with the White Avenue right-of-way vacation last month, the town attorney has suggested that we clean up a right-of-way situation involving a strip, a twenty-five-foot wide strip on the north end of the Hasenger property, that in a, in a plat in nineteen seventy-nine, it was reserved as right-of-way, but never formally accepted by the town. So, what we're proposing with this resolution is to formally adopt, or formally accept the right-of-way and include it as part of the Grove Terrace, the adjacent Grove Terrace right-of-way.
Okay.
So, I'm open for any questions. I believe you have the plats on your council packet.
Is it a plaque? Did you work on this, Cam? Can you show me where, where we're talking about this section out here?
It's a shaded area?
There's a different plat in your packet.
Oh, is it real?
This is the correct one, right, Cam? The other one here, Cam? Just the kind of blue down section there.
So you said from seventy-five, and it was just never formally?
From nineteen seventy-nine, it was set aside by the property owner at that time and reserved as a twenty-five-foot right-of-way, but never formally accepted.
Okay.
Based on the research that we did among the staff, so.
Okay.
That's the suggestion of the resolution, is to formally accept it.
Right. It's similar to what we talked about for White Avenue, that it was dedicated to the town, but nothing's been done with it, so we either need to formally accept it or reject it. This would allow it to be, and actually, I think we'll have to take action later on to formally incorporate it into Grove Terrace, but this would accept the right-of-way.
Okay.
So it's not in this limbo world, and it'll clean up that side of the property.
Okay. Council, we've had, I guess, this in our packet to peruse through for a few days. Any questions for Mr. Do, or anything that's of concern? No? So I guess we just need a motion, or I would entertain a motion to formally accept that right-of-way through this resolution as stated. Do we need to read that, Cam, or no? Okay.
I'll make that motion, that we formally accept the right-of-way.
Okay. Motion to formally accept the right-of-way through this resolution by Vice Mayor Quetch. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Anderson. Any other discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. Thank you, Cam.
Thank you.
And I guess, John, you're good to go. So we're going to pick on Mr. Boswell again. The second resolution we have is a resolution initiating referring to Planning Commission a rezoning of tax map parcel zero-two-zero-dash-eleven-dash-one from R3 Residential to ONI, Office and Institutional District. Mr. Boswell.
Thank you, Mayor Webb, and honorable counsel. As you said, this is for consideration of the town council to initiate by resolution for the planning commission to take a look at rezoning the property located at 335 Coming Street, commonly known as the Hasenger property, from R3 Residential to ONI, Office and Institutional. Staff is asking that due to public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices, that the town council refer this matter to the planning commission. Per Virginia Code, Section fifteen-two, twenty-two eighty-four, there are nine relative factors to be considered in a rezoning. Not all the factors are required to be considered, only those that are pertinent to this particular piece of property. The existing use, first being the existing use and character of the property, the comprehensive plan, the suitability of the property for various uses, and encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the locality. Every proposed rezoning should satisfy one or more of these factors. A locality is not required to consider all nine factors in each zoning decision. Many of these factors have been addressed in the comprehensive plan, and whether a proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan is perhaps the most important consideration in the decision-making process. The Town of Abingdon Comprehensive Plan 2020 Future Land Maps designates this property as public and institutional, thus it's reasonable to consider a rezoning to office and institutional to promote consistency with the comprehensive plan. I would also like to point out that a rezoning to ONI is consistent with the adjacent properties along the west side of Coming Street. Coming Street north of I-81 is zoned commercially and/or office and institutional on both sides, with the exception of two parcels, and that being Veterans Memorial Park and the Hasenger property. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Boswell? I know this is something we probably need to discuss, or?
Well, I just wanted to say that prior, the Hasenger House has been decided prior to this council to be sold for different reasons, and I understand that, and I have to, and I will abide by that and stand by that. And to make that property more attractive as far as to be sold, I think changing it to ONI, like you're saying, would be, would add value to that property.
I don't disagree with that. I don't necessarily know that that's a factor that we need, that staff is looking at, but it is inconsistent with its current use. The property is being used currently as a public office, which is not allowed use in R3 zoning. And that is, that is an issue. And the number one thing that the council should be looking at is comprehensive plan. We spent so much time working on it, a lot of money working on it. And the consensus of the planning commission and town council is that piece of property should be zoned public and institutional, and office and institutional is the right zoning district for that piece of property.
Yeah. So, the big thing I heard was that's consistent with the buildings that surround it?
Yes, sir.
Saying that obviously ties in with the comprehensive plan.
Correct, yes, sir. Two pieces of property on that whole stretch from I-81 north of two Main Street on Cummings, and those are the only two pieces of property that are actually zoned residential. The rest of it's commercial or office institutional.
So, the rest of those, that area, besides this one, is residential, right? The other houses?
Off of Bradley Street?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Up to Grove Terrace?
All that in mind. Yes, sir.
So that, they are still residential, we just want to change?
That's, that's correct. Yeah. If I had a bigger blown-up map, which I probably should have provided you all in the packet, this little spot of blue here is public and institutional, the future land use map for the comprehensive plan, and that is the Hasenger property.
So it has, it has no jurisdiction on this, that's important, that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson?
It doesn't have any variations on the veteran part, right?
No, not whatsoever, no. I would, it doesn't, that doesn't affect the veterans' moral part in the least.
Do you think that, in your personal opinion, do you think that ONI is more suitable for that property?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So we think we're making progress in actually doing, making it what it should be zoning?
Correct, yes, sir. It's not even consistent with the existing zone.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Well, counsel, do we have any other questions for Mr. Boswell, or do we feel good about what?
Let's keep in mind, this is just to initiate it, the process for the zoning. This is no final decision on the zoning. It'll still go through, as Jason said, it'll still go through a public hearing.
Right. The motion would be to move this to the planning commission?
Yeah, it would be to initiate the rezoning process.
By resolution, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, if you guys feel that's appropriate, I would entertain a motion to move that right along, this resolution towards the planning commission?
I will move to move it to the planning commission.
Absolutely. Got a motion by Ms. Pillion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Owens. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Mayor Webb?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Boswell. Appreciate it. We don't have any first or second readings of ordinances, we don't have any considerations of bids, we do have some new business. First item under new business is a presentation by the Berkeley Group regarding the status of zoning and subdivision ordinance. Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Everybody back there can hear me?
Good.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor Webb, members of council. My name is Jonathan McCoy, to add another John to your long list of Johns I've heard so far. I've been working with the Berkeley Group for the past year and a half as a planner, after graduating from Virginia Tech with a double masters in urban planning and public administration, just to give you a little background about myself. Also joining me tonight is Rebecca Cobb, she is on the screen, and she might be able to unmute and say hello.
Rebecca, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you. But she says hello.
Yes, I'm a planner with the Berkeley Group, sorry I couldn't be there tonight, but I look forward to visiting the town soon and being part of this project.
Excellent, thank you, Rebecca. Rebecca has a much longer drive than I do, I come from Benton, so it's just two hours, and Rebecca has a much longer drive. So she will be joining us at future meetings, but she couldn't make it tonight. However, we will be the dynamic duo working on this project with you all moving forward. So, just to get a little background about the Berkeley Group, we're a local government consulting firm specializing in the areas of planning, zoning, community involvement, and more. We bring a collaborative approach to our projects with an array of professional resources. We also provide, we pride ourselves on our ability to understand the unique challenges of local governments across Virginia, and put together, our staff brings over forty-hundred years of direct experience in local government. And I probably should go ahead and start the presentation, shouldn't I? Everything good? Just a moment of technical difficulty? All right, well, I'll just keep moving forward then. This is a big task, and one that will impact your community for many years to come. So, tonight, we hope to accomplish a few things. First, I want to describe the process of updating your zoning and subdivision ordinance, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Second, and this is really the bigger piece, tonight is your big opportunity to provide your thoughts, feedback, and direction at the very beginning of this process, to guide the decisions made over the next year and a half as we work to develop your ordinances. And this is your chance to let us know what you've been hearing from your constituents, what works and doesn't work, what can be improved, and what maybe can be left alone. That being said... That being said, there are a few specific questions related to community design and character, specific uses, and stakeholder engagement towards the end of the presentation that I will be asking your feedback on. As a reminder, the adoption process is really in your hands. We'll be working with your town staff and your planning commission over the next few months to develop the content of the ordinance, but you all will have the final vote on the adoption of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. So without further ado, I'll take us through the agenda. Maybe. Doesn't appear to be working.
Oh, man.
This is all.
It's twice as difficult.
You're part of the presentation. Off to a good start.
Oh, yeah.
The development of the zoning ordinance will go a lot smoother.
There we go, yeah.
All right.
There we go.
Excellent. Uh-oh.
There you go. All right.
Now we're golden. Right and left. I can figure that out. Okay, so let's start back. So tonight, we're gonna go over a number of items. I'll run you through the project review and schedule, the intent of the project, some of the ordinance's purpose and content, followed by some land use-related goals pulled from your new comprehensive plan. I will touch on some of the items in the ordinance diagnostics we conducted for you last year, and next, we'll go through the community engagement process and the next steps. So the project is split into three phases. First is the investigation, next is content development, and the final phase is adoption. During the investigation phase, we'll be working to understand the community needs, including any portions of the ordinance that aren't working well, and potentially new, modern items that we can bring in. To date, we've had a kickoff meeting with your town staff. We have reviewed the current zoning and subdivision ordinances and the comprehensive plan. During this phase, we will also be working on drafting a public survey and gathering information from community stakeholders, but I'll touch on those pieces in detail later on. Phase two involves the content development. We'll take what we hear from the investigation phase and combine that with our technical expertise to produce your new zoning ordinance. This will include regular work sessions with the planning commission, updated definitions and illustratives to help make the ordinance easier to understand. The third and final phase is adoption, in which we present the updated ordinance to the public, incorporate any of the final edits that we may receive, and you all will hold a public hearing for adoption of the ordinance. So this is a loose picture of the project timeline. We have started our public collaboration pieces, and we'll hope to have that wrapped up by early May. Ordinance drafting will begin around the same time and is expected to be finished by spring of next year. Then, public review and adoption will be done by summer of 2022. So what's the project intent? The Berkeley Group is going to bring our experience and work with you, planning commission, town staff, and the citizens of Abingdon to revise your zoning and subdivision ordinances. The intent of this project is to bring your regulatory documents into compliance of state code. We will work to clarify language, reducing potential for legal challenge. We will also address modern zoning and subdivision issues while also considering areas to provide some more flexibility in your zoning code. This will be helpful for economic development efforts in the town by being more broad with these terms. That was something we heard from your town staff during our conversations with them, and is certainly an area that we hope to review. One big piece is to incorporate the subdivision regulations within the zoning ordinance, allowing users to have a seamless regulatory process and ensuring it is updated as needed along with the zoning ordinance. We will revise the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance for compatibility with your new comprehensive plan, taking the goals and strategies found in that document and translating them into actual regulatory frameworks. Finally, we'll be working to add illustrative elements to your zoning ordinance. These are images that provide a visual for use of the ordinance to better understand concepts like setback lines, design elements like lighting and landscaping standards, and other regulations. The intent is to cut back on staff time that is spent explaining what these elements are to citizens. We want to be able to save them headaches of having to take phone calls and explaining when we can point them right to the zoning ordinance itself. We are working with LPDA, a landscape architecture and planning firm based out of Charlottesville, who will be designing those illustrative items for you. Now, I'm sure you all are aware of this, but we find it's important for everyone to understand the driving factors behind a zoning ordinance update. Up here on the slide are what I like to think of as the big three: your comprehensive plan, your zoning ordinance, and your subdivision ordinances. The comprehensive plan, as you all know, since you just went through the process of updating it, is a policy document that drives your regulatory documents. You can't get to where you're going efficiently unless you have a map, and the comprehensive plan is that map to get you where you're going. It sets the visions and goals for the community and guides regulations. Now, your zoning ordinance does a number of things. It regulates the use of land and structures, as well as the size, height, area, and location of these structures. At its very most basic, it ensures access to daylight and airflow for citizens, as well as convenience and safety. It helps to facilitate public services and amenities, and is intended to protect from destruction and obstructions, encroachment and congestion, and dangers and adverse impacts. The subdivision ordinance is a related document that works in conjunction with your zoning ordinance, is intended to establish the procedures and regulations for the subdivision of land within the Town of Abingdon. The ordinance accomplishes a number of objectives, including the equitable and orderly division of land and to serve as a guide for future growth and development. It regulates some land division and development standards, and also provides standards for adequate streets and right-of-ways, utilities, services, and drainage. That line is supposed to be a little more north of that. That was an accident on PowerPoint. Apologies for that. We're not crossing out your policy document. So as part of our document review, I mentioned that we took a look at your comprehensive plan. In reviewing your plan, we identified a few goals. There are several in there. These are not the only four in there, but these are the four that I brought in to discuss tonight with you all. On the left, you'll see four goals, and on the right, you'll see four potential zoning elements that may be used to address those goals. Goal one, to create design guidelines and development regulations that will ensure the town character remains intact, can potentially be addressed by reviewing, amending, and enforcing existing community design standards. These are standards like setback elements, lighting, landscaping, and parking standards, that type of thing. Goal two, neighborhoods will offer a range of housing options for all income levels, may be addressed by reviewing opportunities to expand housing choices within districts, including mixed uses. We would propose that these housing choices remain in line with the character of the existing districts, of course. Goal three, to accommodate new growth through infill development and adaptive reuse. We heard from town staff that there are nonconforming parcels that cannot be developed under the current ordinance, so one method to address that is to ease those standards of nonconforming lots to allow for greater infill development and adaptive reuse. Goal four, to protect historic areas through streamlined regulations. We also heard from town staff and during the diagnostic report that there's a need to amend and enforce the standards in the old and historic district to more equitably treat allowed uses throughout. So we'll work with town staff and the planning commission to develop suitable methods to accomplish these four goals listed here and the others in the comprehensive plan as we develop those zoning and subdivision ordinances. I want to take some time now to refresh your memories on our suggestions found in the diagnostic reviews of your zoning and subdivision ordinance. First, we suggested consolidating the old and historic district into one uniformed district, easing administrative burden, ensuring consistent and equitable treatment, and promoting economic development. Next, we intend to modernize and streamline uses to incorporate terms that can be applied to multiple uses. For example, your current ordinance includes more than 20 different store and shop uses, some of which could be consolidated to allow for adaptability to new uses. At the direction of town staff and planning commission, we can incorporate additional and clarified provisions, such as landscaping, tree canopy, site design, and additional performance standards for specific uses. These requirements can help support comprehensive plan goals and enhance community appearance and increase property value, among other benefits. Moving along, site plan requirements should be updated to align with the Code of Virginia and incorporate best practices, such as allowing administrative approval of minor site plans. Sections regulating zoning enforcement and nonconforming lots, uses, and structures should be reviewed and updated. And finally, optional provisions in the Code of Virginia should be considered and adopted as applicable to Abingdon. For example, conditional zoning provisions could help to ensure that future rezonings align with the goals of the town's comprehensive plan. Next, the suggestions for your subdivision ordinance. We suggest the subdivision ordinance incorporate requirements for minor and major subdivisions, and as a best practice, minor subdivisions should be approved administratively. The ordinance should be reorganized so that all plat requirements, timelines, and administration elements are grouped into sections for ease of use. Optional provisions in the Code of Virginia should be considered and adopted as well, as applicable to Abingdon, excuse me, applicable to Abingdon, that's a tough phrase to say. For example, the town should consider adopting the optional ordinance provisions found in the Code of Virginia, section 15.2-2242, including but not limited to voluntary funding of off-site road improvements and Phase One environmental assessment provisions. So next is the fun piece. This is your community engagement. It's a piece of every one of our projects that we take very seriously. It's our intent that the new zoning and subdivision ordinance is one that works to benefit the entire community. To find out the needs of Abingdon citizens, we propose a three-pronged approach to community engagement. Step one is the public survey that I mentioned earlier. It will be conducted online with hard copy surveys available as well to reach out to as many people as we can. We intend for that to go live later this month and be open for responses through April. Steps two and three are the public workshop and stakeholder sessions. The public workshop focuses on specific zoning concerns and involves small group exercises with citizens, while the stakeholder work sessions provide insight from community experts, and is conducted with related representative groups. The stakeholder work sessions and public workshop are set for April 1st this year. So some of the stakeholders we typically suggest including in the work sessions include your real estate agents, bankers, and development financing representatives, surveyors, engineers, and architects, developers, and contractors, land use attorneys, business owners, and special interest groups. Now, I want to take some time to turn it over to you all. These are some examples that we typically include with our zoning and subdivision ordinance. Are there other key stakeholder groups that come to your mind that should be involved in the stakeholder listening sessions that we don't have shown here? I've stumped them all.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that sort of is all-encompassing. I think we can, I mean, I think I can live with all of those.
Okay.
Pharmacists, or?
It's a special interest group, Jim.
You could almost lump anybody into a special interest group, right?
Well, yeah, absolutely. If there's anything that comes to your mind later on, please feel free to pass that off to your staff, and we'll have a conversation about who to include as well. We want to be able to get everybody that we can involved in the stakeholder sessions, and these are people that typically come in contact with the zoning ordinance that use it, maybe not on a day-to-day basis, but on a week-to-week or month-to-month basis as they develop in the town. So keep that in mind as you think about that. So next question I also have for you all is, we've included some example stakeholder questions for you that should be located in your agenda packets. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to review those yet or not. But if you have, or if you haven't, do you have any modifications or suggestions on the type of questions that we should be asking during the stakeholder work sessions? Again, these are some of our more typical questions, and we've also passed these off to staff for review as well.
Now, these questions, are these are for the stakeholders, or is this for the public survey?
They will be for the stakeholders. We modify them a little bit for the public survey as the public survey reaches a broader audience, and some of these are more specific questions.
And that rolls out first, the public survey and then the stakeholders?
Yes, sir. We hope the public survey to go out in the second week of March, and we'll be conducting these the very first day of April, April Fool's Day.
So that survey will be back in time for the stakeholders to look at?
We intend to close the survey on April 8th, which will be a few days afterwards, but we can always adjust when we open and close the survey as needed if you feel that it should be closed by that stakeholder work session.
And you mentioned that most of that's online. How do we target our population to see that they're, that that's online?
Yes, sir, absolutely. So we are doing, for the public survey, we hope to also roll out a paper survey, and so what they'll be able to do is come by Town Hall and pick up a survey, fill it out, and then return it later on. And we'll be accepting surveys through the close of the online survey. So we will be posting, staff, I believe, will be posting an online webpage for some of this information involving the zoning and subdivision ordinance plan and process. That's where the link to the survey will be located, and then the paper copy should be located here in Town Hall for folks to be able to pick up.
So we'll advertise the survey some way, somehow, let them know that there's a survey coming?
Yes, sir. Send it from the rooftops.
We could put it on, on the social media. That's usually one of the best places to spread that stuff. Of course, it'll be on our website, too, but most people will go to the website from social media links, so we'll get that out online the best we can.
Absolutely. Yeah, we want the most response that we can to get the best possible product back to the people. So is there any thoughts or suggestions for the stakeholder questions here? Anything coming to mind? They all sound pretty good.
I mean, other than people who do this day-to-day, I don't think that anybody thinks about the zoning or subdivision ordinance except for the individual thing that has affected them. So the broad-based questions are great, but I think you're gonna hear, well, I had a rental house on this street, and I want it to be this, or I wanted this house to be a business, and they won't let me, et cetera, or Mr. Boswell was mean to me.
We'll filter out those responses.
That's actually one of the multiple-choice questions that were developed.
So I think that you probably will get a lot more reaction to, you know, specific examples of things, rather than what does the zoning ordinance mean to me, because it probably doesn't mean anything to much of anybody other than us.
Right, absolutely. And the questions on the public survey, they're a combination of more general ideas of what you want the development of the town to look like, what do you enjoy or prefer, one standard over another type thing in terms of landscaping and parking standards. They also provide some more deep dives as well. So we're gonna take some of the information from your comprehensive plan survey that was done and take a look at that, make sure we're not duplicating those questions. We don't want to waste anybody's time answering the same questions, but we will take some of that information in and develop some new ones as well. So it's in process and should be done pretty soon, within the next couple of days for the public survey. Other questions, thoughts? If not, I'll move on. I see some eager eyes to move on. All right. So moving on, our keys to success, and this is both for you all, the planning commission, and town staff. We've included just some keys to make this a successful project, including staying engaged from start to finish, and what that will look like for some of you in the room is taking the survey, posting the survey, telling your friends and family about the survey to get that information out there. We want you to inform and listen to constituents, work with your staff to get input. I don't think that's gonna be a problem here. It seems like everybody's on the same page every step of the way here. Identify and communicate with stakeholders, and as far as planning commissions involved, this one's really for them, is to stay involved and do the homework, to read the packets, make sure that you come to the meetings prepared. So we want every meeting that we have to be as beneficial as possible, so we'll involve some homework. So the next steps for the project, tonight, obviously, we have the kickoff work session. Hello, I'm here. The bolded items represent opportunities for public involvement. So on April 1st, like I said, we'll have the public workshop. We will also have the stakeholder listening sessions that day. The public workshop will be in the evening. We will have the public survey, like I mentioned, open from March to April, and then we'll follow those pieces with drafting of the ordinance and ongoing work sessions with the planning commissions. We'll have a public open house, and then we'll incorporate final revisions, and then finally, in May of 2022, we'll be doing the public hearings and adoption of your brand-new zoning and subdivision ordinances. So those are the big next steps for the process, and now I've got some more questions for you all, hopefully. I haven't worn you out too much so far. What I want to do now is get kind of a big-picture idea of how you feel development is doing in the town. Are you generally satisfied with the quality, form, and character in Abingdon? Are there any areas that need attention, for example, in commercial or residential areas? So when you go outside tonight, you're walking to your car, walking home, I want you to take a look at the buildings and really think, are you satisfied with the development here in the town? Is there changes that you think could be made? Anything immediately pop in your minds?
For me, it's landscaping with some of our commercial developments. I think, you know, in other municipalities I've been into, they use a lot of landscaping to soften the buildings. And I think we lack a little bit of that here.
So you'd like to see some additional standards or recommendations for landscaping out here?
Is that the kind of question?
Yeah, absolutely.
On the nose.
Yeah.
He's gotta always break the ice with the zoning stuff.
I mean, in terms of the old and historic district, and some of the newer council members might not know this, but we have sub-districts that are basically every block. So the way that was developed is that whatever was there is the use. So Campbell Funeral Home was in Sub-District 7. Funeral homes is allowed. Across the street, funeral homes aren't allowed because there isn't a funeral home there. So I think there does need to be some consolidation of that, although this board and HPRV and planning commission have discussed in the past. Valley Street, for instance, has a, a different consistency and, and maybe different uses that people would want to make than of the middle of Main Street would be. So that's, that's the type of thing to think about, but in, in Old and Historic, it's incredibly complicated. And also, our zoning ordinance goes back to at least nineteen seventy-one, which may sound like when you say that out loud, it's thirty years ago, but in fact, it was fifty. So there, there are lots and lots of provisions in that that I bet have never been changed. To his point, there, there are lots of references in there to the, the code that say fifteen point one that hasn't existed for many, many years. So there's lots and lots and lots of stuff to just modernize, but at the same time, as you guys always say, not, not to unmodernize Abing, not, not to modernize Abingdon too much. So that's going to be the balance.
Yeah, a lot of what we ran into, just to kind of mirror what Cam said, is when I served with Al and Wayne, they were pros with zoning and, and there were a lot of contradictory or provisions in the zoning code that really didn't incorporate well, or, or maybe you'd have one piece over here that said you could do X, Y, and Z, and the others said you couldn't, and just didn't, didn't flow well. There was no continuity. So yeah, you know, with having that kind of age on it, fifty years, certainly, we've got things that maybe aren't even being used appropriately, like we shined a light on the passenger house earlier. But yeah, those, those are the things that we're looking to update and correct.
Great.
Take most of that confusion out of there. And certainly, one of the things I think the entire council wanted to do was try to make Abingdon more business-friendly. So I know some of the zoning things that, which we already, you know, addressed the, the sun issues that we had before, but, but yeah, I think all this will certainly help to do that, make it more streamlined and just.
I think you guys used that fifty-year term a little bit to look.
A, a, and I think so too, with that consistency and, and some of the things that have come up have been, you know, in, in lower density areas, things have been allowed that weren't, that aren't allowed in higher density areas and things that just make it consistent, that would be normal zoning practice, that for whatever reason, somebody just said, hey, can we have a short-term rental in this district? And nobody thought to incorporate it in other things that might have made sense. And so it seems unfair to some people to be allowed in some areas and not others. And then there's lots of things in the zoning code that we have definitions for, but there's no use listed. So I'm glad that we know what it is, but it's not allowed. So those types of things. But I think from, from this board, and I assume you're including plant, uh, HPRB in your discussion of planning commission, because they, I know Dr. Owens is going to be interested in what lots of things related to the historic district and, and that board too. But you guys have talked about lots of other things you could probably provide him input with now, and we could be here till midnight about, but those are the types of things that council have discussed, and certainly I know that we come up with on staff issues is, is mostly just intertwining it with the code, as you mentioned. I guess we're going to have to add a, an ordinance about clutter now that that has passed the General Assembly. But things like that, that just haven't ever been updated in, in the past, but also making some general idea of what you guys want zoning to be. And that's going to be a, a broader year-long discussion, obviously, as to what you want it to, to be, but those are the types of things that'll come up.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, a, a lot of what you just said and what you've all said is echoed in most of the communities we work with doing zoning and subdivision ordinance updates. They haven't updated, done a wholesale update of their ordinance in many, many decades. And with zoning text amendments and change of uses and definitions and references to code that doesn't exist anymore, it needs to be comprehensively reviewed, and that's what we hope to deliver to you all, is something that's streamlined, easy to use, and makes Abingdon a little friendlier to business and, and just better overall in terms of the, the document itself. So that's what our hope is, and that's what you'll receive in May of twenty twenty-two for sure. You mentioned some of the, the Airbnb types, and I kind of jumped the gun on my next questions about uses. I wanted to ask you all if there were any uses specifically that you can think of that are concerned to you, ones that you feel aren't being addressed in your zoning or subdivision, your zoning ordinance now, or ones that are being unnecessarily restricted or held back that you think maybe we can loosen some restrictions on? We've heard from staff, I believe, mini warehouses is a topic that has come out before. So that's one item we intend to review and take a look at, but if there are others that you can think of now, or you're up at three in the morning and you jolt awake and think about other uses, you can always feel free to send them to us. I might not be awake, but I'm willing to read the email when I do get up.
Airbnb, the whole Airbnb and, um, short-term rental has been a topic that we've dealt with in the recent past.
Is it, yeah, are there i- items in the zoning ordinance that make that harder to get done? Are you looking to make that a little easier for people to have a short-term rental in their homes or their accessory dwellings, or what, what's the consensus there?
Can I, can I answer that? I think I can summarize with the council. I think I can summarize based on this discussion we had, this ordeal we had last time. I think a majority of the council, we want to allow it, but we still want to preserve the residential character of the community. Because we are a tourism, you know, destination, and so we do recognize there are going to be lots of those establishments, but we want to still have that balance between, you know, a community that we can live in and have good quality of life and just becoming a rental community. Did I summarize it up pretty?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, we can definitely look at that for sure.
And I think what we've done right now is sort of a piecemeal, and that we need to get, we need to get a better policy and look at it stronger. I know we've talked to Jason about that too.
Okay, okay. Yeah, absolutely. We can definitely take a, a look at that, review that, and get you something that's more comprehensive and understandable. So earlier today, you also had a few rezonings that you addressed. Are there any issues with uses that come up frequently for rezoning that you think should be addressed in a different manner? Are you spending a lot of time having to rezone specific uses or issue special use permits for items that you would like to see maybe done a different way, or maybe not have to rezone all the time?
Going back to the historic district, something that's just come up recent, recently, that the state footprint and our town historic district footprint don't match. And so recently, we've had a structure that we thought was in the historic district and wasn't in the historic district, but it's in the state district, which is, doesn't protect the structure. So that's kind of a, um, this area, there, the historic district comes up to a certain point, and then there's, it's like a block of not, and then it goes back into another historic district. It's disjointed, and somehow, some way, if we can get all that cleaned up, would be great, but it's going to be a big job.
Right, absolutely. So you, so it sounds like you, you might want a little better alignment between your local and the state historic districts?
Right, the footprint.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that. Are there other areas?
I've, I've been here for two years and I can't recall, at least with this council, there being a lot of these situations where, oh, we didn't have that use in there. The only issue that's come up that I can recall, other than the Airbnb, is the historic district. When we were trying to add restaurant into its sub-district where a restaurant already existed. So I think a lot of our, our use issues stem from, uh, from the old and historic, but I just, some of the council members have only been here since last July, but I've been here for almost two years, and I just can't remember a lot of specific instances where there were, you know, coming to the council every other month, issuing a special use permit or issuing, you know, some sort of a special exemption. I just, I don't think that's, of course, you guys have been here longer than me, but I just can't recall a lot of that.
It's just here and there, you know, and really haven't had a whole lot of those things pop up. Maybe just one since we've all been seated together particularly, but yeah.
Okay.
I think that continuity and streamlined process will probably give us the, the result we desire.
Right. Yeah, I, I think that the, the inconsistencies are, are there and all potential for that. Luckily, I don't think, we haven't had anything that's, like Jimmy said, come to council on that level. But there are lots of things that staff gets questions about all the time, about, I want to put a barber shop here, and barber shops aren't, personal services allowed here, but barber shops aren't allowed here, and, and things of that nature. But I, I think that, for the reasons I just said before, if we're inclusive of other things, the short-term rental is a good example, because in R three, it's called one thing, in Old and Historic, you can have a bed and breakfast, and B one and B two, you couldn't do anything other than a home stay, which is completely separate and not really a zoning thing. So we cleaned that part up because that was a consistent problem, but there are examples like that throughout the whole code.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. We'll definitely take a look at that and, and get those to a better spot for you.
I think another thing too that needs to be clarified would be what constitutes the historical district. Because a lot of people I've run into, they don't know where it is, what it is, why is this, this area historical district and this area is not.
Okay.
And they pretty much adjacent to each other.
Gotcha.
I think that'd be a good.
Okay. Yeah, that, that seems like a, a, a common theme, is taking a, a good hard look at the Old and Historic District and, and seeing what we can do to make it a little easier to understand, a little more streamlined and aligned. So we'll definitely be taking a look at that. So next, the image on your screen here is just an example of, of a lot with the front and side setbacks, rear setbacks, and lot coverage. When you're looking at your district standards, do you have any suggestions or ideas or issues with any of the existing setbacks or building heights or design elements as far as these properties go, right off the top of your head, that you can think of? Are you generally okay with the, I'm not asking you to, to go ahead and give me an idea of maybe moving setback lines back by five feet or anything like that? Just if it's something that can come to your mind that you're thinking of now that might be something to review.
Issues right now. Can you all, and particularly with setbacks and, not particularly?
Okay, great. All right. Well, then, moving on. Got a few more questions for you. I don't want to keep you all night. I don't want to keep you to midnight, midnight by any means. So you discussed a little bit about maybe a need for some landscaping standards. Are there other community design standards that you think could be better expressed in your ordinance, better understood, better defined, or maybe lessened even? And that includes your parking standards, lighting. I believe you've already addressed signs last year. But if there's other screening or buffering, anything like that, that you think might need to be amended or reviewed or changed at any rate?
I'm not sure we have a horse in this race, but I have heard a couple of times from certain individuals that may or may not be in the crowd, that we have some landscaping issues at our interstate exchanges.
Okay.
Maybe he's in the crowd. But, you know, and I've heard that from a couple of different people. I don't know that we can address that with, with zoning. I, I mean, I'm not sure if that's a VDOT thing that we have no control over, or maybe.
We have some control. We got solutions to that.
Yeah. But, but that is something that I have been told many times, and I think it, with all three interstate exchanges being brand-new in the next two years, within the next two years, I should say, we've got an opportunity to really make the entrance corridors to the town really beautiful. So if that's something we can somehow incorporate, that'd be great. If it's not, we'll address it with other policy and procedure.
Excellent. Yeah, we could take a look and see what we can get done and.
Yeah, I mean, we, we actually, I actually talked to, I don't know if it was John Doof, if he was here yet. And what, I, it was one of the things that was bothering me. You come off X seventeen and you see trash and stuff, it's just thrown there, and that's the gateway to the, you know, to the historic district and as far as, you know, the path that everybody's going to take to go downtown, and nobody wants to see that. And, you know, the town might be in a position to take over responsibility to maintain that. And we, we did actually talk to them, and it's just obviously, you know, an additional obligation on the town. Whereas they're just going to do it through their regular maintenance. When that intersection gets completed, when that gets, you know, completely redesigned, I certainly would like to entertain that idea to have the town take over responsibility for maintaining that, because I think, you know, the town would, would prioritize more of the appearance of that than, I mean, the state that has, you know, millions and billions of miles, a hundred million. You know what I'm talking about? So there is mechanisms for the town to take over some responsibility on that through an agreement through VDOT, but, but I, I agree with you on that. It's something that we definitely should try to prioritize when that interstate, interstate is, exchange is completed.
Sure.
Of course, one of them will be a partial account, nineteen would partially be.
But just, just a thought, throw it up there while we hit the opportunity.
Absolutely. That's what we're here for. That's what we want to hear.
Would that be under your right-of-way landscaping you have?
Um, I would have to take a look. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I believe it would be involved in the right-of-way landscaping. I think that's mostly intended to be like your streets, your side streets, main streets throughout the town. Right, yeah, your boulevards and such like that. But I'll, Rebecca is our, our guru when it comes to some of these standards, so she'll definitely be involved, and I'll be asking her just to verify.
Great.
Anything else in terms of design, community design standards? All right.
Areas or the standards? I mean, an area that I think that, that when you look at would be Plum Alley as far as improving the lighting, for one thing, buffering, screening, landscaping through that, where a lot of people do a lot of walking there.
Okay.
Aesthetically be appealing to update that.
Okay.
That's part of this.
Yeah, they, they typically fall along your district standards. So like, if you're in your commercial district, you'll have certain standards for lighting and landscaping, and then residential will have very different ones. So depending on where the street lies in there, we'll have to take a look and see what we can do if there's specific areas that we can address, that'd be what we would want to do. All right, moving on. For the, another goal that you had in your comprehensive plan that I didn't mention on that previous slide was an overlay district to provide protection from adjacent development for the Creeper Trail. So in your mind, what type of standards would you potentially advocate for to achieve this goal? Would it be, I think it suggested some setback ideas, but if there's anything else that you have in mind that we could potentially take a look at to address this concern?
I mean, isn't there already a significant setback since, I mean, with the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm still learning about these things, but isn't there already a significant setback that's owned by Damascus and Abingdon jointly along the length of the trail, and does that apply to the section of the trail that is in town?
Sure. And, and it depends on the areas. We can go back through the railroad valuation maps as to what the town's both got, but there's forty foot of right-of-way at various sections. I, I don't know, John, if you know the answer to the question right at.
Typically from forty foot total width to up to eighty feet in some cases.
Do you know what it is right at the Meadows, for instance?
I believe it's, I think it's eighty-two, but we can vary.
My comment was going to be, we just developed most of it ourselves. Not sure. We don't want to prevent ourselves from developing it since we just did.
Understandable. Well, that's something we could take a look at, and, you know, if something pops up that you would like us to address specifically for the Creeper Trail, we'd be happy to do so.
Sure.
So the next one is just asking again if there's any other key stakeholders, and we've had a little bit of time since I've last mentioned it. So if anything's pop in your mind, these are the next immediate steps. So we just want to be sure that we've approached and gotten involved with any of the stakeholders or stakeholder groups, or if there's any modifications to the questions. I know it's been a year since we last discussed it fifteen minutes ago, but if there's anything that you can think of in your mind that you would want to address or change, be thinking on that tonight, the next couple of weeks, and we'll incorporate that. And so far, that's it for me. I want to thank you again for the time and having me this evening. I and the rest of my colleagues are very excited to work with you all on this project. I mentioned earlier, I can't remember who I was talking to, that this is my third time here in Abingdon, my first time in the Town Hall. But I, it's a beautiful town. I'm very excited to get involved and, and work in your community moving forward. And if you have any questions that come to you over the next few days, please pass them off to your staff. My contact information's up here on the screen. You can send me an email or Rebecca's as well. But other than that, that's all I have for you this evening. So I thank you, and I look forward to working.
One more thing, not to really extend this, this time. If there's anything that does come up, it would just be helpful if, if you communicated that to me or Jason, just so we can make sure we follow up on it with, with the Berkeley group. So if there's something that you're thinking about, probably best to, to contact one of us. And if you give it to me, I'm just going to turn around and give it to Jason.
Sure.
So either one of us is fine. That way we can kind of provide that information and have to make sure that they're staying on top of it.
Yes, absolutely. That would, that would be perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you. Thank you so much. I'm not sure if I need to close this out or leave it there. I'm just going to leave that quicker there. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to our presentation from Abingdon Main Street. Welcome aboard.
All right. Hi, I'm Nicole Childress, and I am the Executive Director of Abingdon Main Street. I wanted to come before you today to let you know what we've been up to really for the past year. As you know, AMS was looking at the possibility of dissolving at the end of twenty nineteen. We have since completely dismantled our organization, had a good hard look at what was working and what was not, and what we could change to better serve our community. First, I'd like to let you know about some key initiatives. First, I'd like to let you know about some key initiatives and events that we introduced in 2020. With the generous grant from the Washington County Cares Act funds, we were able to partner with the team at Starscape Media and two local photographers to produce twenty videos and dozens of marketing photos, all designed to promote businesses, attractions, and outdoor recreation in and around Abingdon. This highlighted our local gems and gave residents and future potential tourists the opportunity to explore Abingdon from the comfort of their couch, especially important as COVID cases surged throughout our region. We have seen a tremendous reach of these videos with over thirty-five thousand unique views and still climbing. The marketing materials are being shared with businesses and organizations that were involved so they can use them to further their own marketing efforts. While there were many funding programs also in the wake of COVID, a lot of them excluded businesses with less than twenty employees, which basically excluded every business in our downtown district. Seeing this issue, we applied for and were granted ten thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development to create the Silver Lining Fund. With this fund, we created micro grants for small businesses in our footprint to pivot an aspect of their business, and so they were better able to position themselves to survive the downturn in the economy. To date, Abingdon Main Street has given twelve grants to businesses in our district to purchase updated technology, point-of-sale systems, website upgrades, new marketing initiatives, and work to bring their brick-and-mortar shops online so they can reach their customers in a virtual space. Some of this money was also used to create a storefront on our new website that can be utilized as a volunteer souvenir shop, or volunteer, a virtual souvenir shop for downtown businesses. We have already started a partnership with Barter Theater and recently sold out of their Barter at the Moonlight hoodies, which financially benefits both Abingdon Main Street and Barter Theater, showing how a partnership with Abingdon Main Street is a rising tide that lifts all boats. Abingdon Main Street worked diligently to create our first annual Halloween scavenger hunt downtown. With two starting points to accommodate trick-or-treaters of all ages, families were directed from business to business with the aid of rhyming clues for their next destination. The full run was roughly two miles and included twenty-two businesses, organizations, and churches. We worked with the Mount Rogers Health District and within all CDC guidelines to ensure that we were creating an activity that would be safe for the community while still allowing a sense of connection that was desperately needed in a time of isolation. The journey ended in the lawn at the Martha Washington Hotel and Spa, where you could deliver your paper pumpkin to the Halloween tree and get a treat bag. Those bags were generously provided with partnership between Abingdon Main Street, Target, Food City, Kroger, and Food Lion. Over seven hundred children came to that event with their families also participating. We had a really positive response to this event with Facebook commenters stating that the town looked like a Hallmark movie and that they hoped that this was the start of an ongoing Abingdon tradition. Many businesses also reported that people expressed delight in finding an unknown business and mentioned discovering them from the Halloween event when they came back to buy something at their shop. While we were really pleased and honestly a little overwhelmed at how many people came to the Halloween event, the number that I'm most proud of is zero. Several times over the six-week period following Halloween, I had conversations with the epidemiologist at the Mount Rogers Health District about whether any infection cases can be traced back to our event. They were conducting extensive contact tracing at the time and tracking regional COVID cases, and I am proud to say that through our careful planning and efforts, we saw zero incidences of COVID cases transmitted through our Halloween scavenger hunt, which other local Halloween events cannot say. As a part of ongoing accreditation requirements through National Main Street and Virginia Main Street, we do an annual self-evaluation assessment. It's an extensive survey covering items from creating a board that reflects the diversity of thought and opinion in our community, to attending a certain number of trainings, having your organization in proper working order, being on top of reporting, having a solid work plan with measurable outcomes, and so much more. The scores are pretty similar to testing in school, and you have to get at least a C or seventy points to retain your accreditation. To give you an idea of where we started at at the end of 2019, we ended that year with a score of forty-five. So I'm thrilled to say that we finished 2020 with a new score of seventy-five. So in the midst of a pandemic, crisis after crisis, and a merely nonexistent budget, the Abingdon Main Street team exceeded even my high expectations. We have already checked every box on our remediation plan with the exception of having a full-time executive director and stable funding in place. Both of those are non-negotiable requirements from National Main Street and goals that we have to achieve by the end of this calendar year. We have significantly restructured our organization. Through a five-week board training program facilitated by Virginia Main Street, we have new bylaws, new mission and vision statements, transformation strategies informed by community assessments, and a work plan with goals and measurable desired outcomes. We are spearheading a new event starting in May, which will be a revamped First Friday event series that will recur monthly on an ongoing basis, and we've already begun additional planning for the next two years, including accepting a responsibility for January jams, Thursday jams, and Buzzer Fest. We have worked really hard to become a great partner and continue to seek win-win situations where our efforts result in maximum benefit for the community. Through talking with residents, business owners, government representatives, just to name a few, we have been able to identify gaps and needs in the community that we are diligently working to fill. It is worth mentioning that not getting funding from the town for the past two years has impacted our ability to get funding from other sources. I've been in many conversations with potential donors who have stated directly, if the town doesn't think you're worth funding, why should we? Over the past year, I firmly believe that we have shown ourselves to be a great asset to the town. We have a board and staff in place that are passionate about this program being a success. We have put in the work, and now we need your help to get to the next level. I truly appreciate you granting me the time to bring you up to speed about what Main Street's been doing in the past year, and I would love to answer any questions that you might have about our organization.
Counsel?
I have no question.
Any specific questions for her tonight? Well, I'd like to thank you for coming out and taking the time to update us.
Yeah, also, if you guys don't have any questions, I know our new board president would love to speak, if you would be okay with that. Hannah Ingram has been a resident actress at Barter Theater for fourteen years. She's currently working in the Workforce Development Board in coordination with the Mount Rogers Adult Education Program. She's on the board for the Southwest Virginia Higher Ed Center, the Washington County Independent Neighbors, Kingsport Symphony of the Mountains, and I consider Abingdon Main Street very fortunate to have her on our team. So Hannah, if you would like to come speak?
Hey, everybody. I will keep this short, I promise. I know it's been a long night for everybody. It's so good to see some friendly half faces up there. It's been a while. Yes, I am Hannah Ingram. I am the new board president of Abingdon Main Street, and as many of you already know, I believe very strongly that Abingdon should just be the place where we reside. Abingdon should be the place that we love to live. And to quote our fabulously dedicated board secretary, Brooke Bedner, who is, of course, here tonight, "Love where you live, but remember that love is a verb. Love means taking action, and love means getting involved." I can't agree more, obviously, you can't agree more. And there are so many ways that we can take action together to ensure that Abingdon's downtown commercial district continues to blossom into the family-friendly, economically savvy, beautifully preserved gem that we know it can be. The partnership between Abingdon Main Street and the town has not always effectively lived up to its potential, but we are looking to change that, already have, and we want to get to work. So Nicole has been working tirelessly, as you hear, over this past challenging year to reposition all of us. We are so proud of everything that we were able to accomplish last year on our almost nonexistent budget, and while we can't wait to move forward with these future projected plans, we would really rather not do the whole nonexistent budget thing again. As we all know, sustainable funding means that our executive director can focus on the actual important work of the organization rather than chasing down dollars and crunching numbers all the time. And if you look at our page of accomplishments throughout the pandemic year, imagine the things we can get done with appropriate and adequate funding. And while you are on that page, take a look at the fun fact at the bottom for everyone here who doesn't see it. In Virginia, every dollar invested in communities via a Main Street organization generates sixteen dollars in return. That's pretty good. And the time is ripe right now for partnership and collaboration between our local and public private sectors. In this post-COVID economic world, and without a tourism-specific department in the current town structure, it's vital that we reconnect with our local tourism roots. We stimulate additional private investment and sustainable growth in our region when we collectively strategize with a common purpose. And now more than ever, it's imperative that we take proactive steps together to ensure that our unique local economy remains vibrant to its residents and visitors alike. So why fund us? You heard about those accreditation things? We've been remediated, we've worked our way up. The straight-A student in me cringes when I hear the forty-five score, oh my gosh, but we're up to seventy-five. And Nicole assures us that we're already on track to even beat those numbers by the end of this year. The good news is, those accreditation standards mean that we are a safe bet. If we are measuring up to that, someone else is holding us to those standards. You get to understand that we are living up to something, and you are investing in something that's doing the work. I will also add, it opens up the the Main Street guidelines. They open up our community to be able to take advantage of the extensive network of resources and support through DHCD's Main Street program. And there are certain grants and financial resources that become available to local government entities if and only if those local governments can prove they've clearly supported their local Main Street organization. So having a Main Street organization is considered a benchmark commitment to economic vitality and historic preservation. In the nonprofit world, it is pretty rare to find that level of economic influence and return on investment. So we ask you to keep that little tidbit in mind as you embark on the joys of budget season coming up and all these funding decisions. We can continue to bring targeted resources to our area, but we can only be as productive as our funding allows us to be. We're working really hard to diversify all of our funding resources. We are not sitting back. But just like Nicole mentioned, there are many in the private sector who look to the town's funding patterns before deciding which organizations they want to fund. So a financial vote of confidence from you all has a great ability to affect hearts, minds, and wallets in a big way. I'm gonna skip, because you heard about our scorecard. The last thing I was gonna say is we need to finish out this year with a full-time paid position for our executive director, Nicole. That's one of the checkboxes that we still have to do. We are not at all interested in a one-year-and-done project planning trajectory. We understand that things like economic growth and building these community relationships do not happen overnight. We are in it for the long haul. And lastly, I'm gonna close with a phrase that I heard just the other day, and Vice Mayor Quetch, it reminds me, you and I on the campaign trail used to trade back and forth with that old, the rising tide lifts all boats thing, but I have a new one, and I just heard it the other day. My husband Matt, he was making biscuits the other day. Stand back, he's mine. And when I expressed concern that these biscuits were scrunched way too closely together in the pan, he assured me, no, 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 when all the biscuits are touching, they help each other rise. I had no idea. So what I want to leave you guys with today, in this really strange, disconnected time, is that sometimes we get to pick and choose who we interact with and which causes we want to support, but sometimes it's simply about recognizing who you're already touching, who you're already connected to. We are all the biscuits, Abingdon is the pan, and we are all already touching. So let's get back to the business of rising, and we very much look forward to working with you all to actively love where we live, and thank you in advance for your support. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah and Nicole, for coming and speaking with us. It's great to get an update, and we're excited about what you guys will accomplish as well. Moving along, we do have some old business, but I think we're gonna skip that item because it's being discussed in the closed session. So I guess we'll address miscellaneous business and communications from the town manager.
I have about twenty things to discuss, but I'll think y'all pass over for the work session. No, I don't really.
Have anything of particular interest at this time, Mayor, so. Absolutely, sure. And council member reports, does anybody have a council member report they'd like to share with the public?
No report.
No reports?
No reports.
Okay. So I guess at this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the three items we had just talked about before.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Quetch to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
No, somebody's gotta read the.
Before we. Okay.
Okay. I move that the Abingdon Town Council convene in closed session to discuss the following. As permitted by Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one A one, a personnel matter involving consideration or interview of candidates for employment or appointment for boards and committees, and as permitted by Virginia Code two dot two dash three seven one one A three, a matter involving disposition of publicly publicly held real property because discussion in an open meeting could adversely affect our bargaining position as permitted by Virginia Code two dot two three seven one A two nine concerning a potential lease.
All right, so now we have the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Mr. Anderson, any discussion, counsel? Ken, if you'll please call.
Mr. Owens.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Ms. Pilia.
Hi.
Ms. Quetch.
Hi.
Mayor Webb.
Hi. All right. Are we hosting inside the chamber of counsel?
We're gonna have to have the closed session.
All right. All right.
Except for these town members that we asked to stick. Yeah. You get it.
You know, it's just...
Find out.
It's just like...
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we reconvene.
All right, motion to come back into open session and second, motion by Mr. Owens, second by Vice Mayor Quetch. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
I'm here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Pillian.
Yeah.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
Sorry.
And we have a certification to read.
I move that the town council certify that in the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matter or matters one specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and two lawfully permitted to be discussed under the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act cited in that motion.
Mr. Owens, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Anderson.
I so certify.
Ms. Pillian.
I so certify.
Ms. Quetch.
I so certify.
And Mayor Webb.
I so certify.
All right, so we've got a couple of items we need to address now that we're out of the closed session. I think first up will be the old business, item N, number one, the Hassan-